Want to welcome everyone to the Monday, August twenty first, two thousand and three, regular city council meeting for the Prairie Grove, um, for the city of Prairie Grove and call order. Roll call. First of all, the business will be public comment. Um, would anyone like to speak today in public comment?
I'm Brad Hancock. We've got a group here from Picket Ridge Road. We heard that y'all have done both the proof paving our road tonight. And we wanted to come to say thank you. We kind of felt like steps older than since we were candidates about six and this will be the first meaningful improvement that we've had. And we just wanted to say you are encouraged with the bikes.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Alright, here are none will move to the approval of minutes for the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor say aye. Motion is approved. Treasures report was sent out. I have any question or comment? Here and none will move that to, uh, or we'll place it for audit. We have no unfinished business. And which brings us to the first order of new business, which is the proclamation of Dr. Gary Davis.
For the ones in here that do not know everything about Dr. Davis, and I, I probably know some of the least of, of most of the people around here, but what, what I do know about Dr. Davis is that he has served our community for over fifty-two years in the city of Prairie Grove. He is our pharmacist from Sterling Drug. And he has faithfully, uh, donated your life to our city. And so as, as the current mayor, I can't tell you how much that means. We talk to businesses all the time. And we're always, when we do ribbon curtains, we, we thank people for choosing us, for, for choosing Prairie Grove and being part of what we do. And so now we're on the backside of that. Not only did you chose us, but you stayed and served the citizens of this community for fifty-plus years. And so with that, I have a proclamation for you tonight, sir. And I'm gonna read the proclamation and then I will, I will come over to the side with you. And so we can take a few pitches, but the proclamation says, whereas, actually I'm gonna come out here with you, Mr. Davis. Keep it as, it's formal as it needs to be, okay? Whereas Dr. Gary Davis has been pharmacist, a businessman, and a business owner in Prairie Grove for many years. And whereas Sterling Drug Store has been a part of Prairie Grove downtown for a hundred and five years, with the Davis family involved in ownership of that business since nineteen fifty-five. And whereas Dr. Davis joined the firm in nineteen seventy-one, and has been a vital part of Prairie Grove's business community and downtown Prairie Grove for over five decades. And whereas Dr. Davis has been vital for the local medical community providing for the health need, uh, of, of his men and customers. And whereas the city of Arnie, who had Dr. Gary Davis, has won of our trusted local merchants for so many years. Whereas the city of Prairie Grove wishes to express much gratitude and appreciation for all their time and efforts and willingness to go and love them beyond all of such. Whereas the city of Prairie Grove City Council wishes to acknowledge Dr. Gary Davis for his service to the male, therefore I, David Falk, may have this great city of Prairie Grove fifty-twenty Tuesday. August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, could be declared as Dr. Gary Davis Day within our city. Dr. Gary Davis is a member of his contribution to the Prairie City and is extended and with somehow appreciation for his years of service, protectionism, and excellence at Sterling Drug. You wanna, you wanna hold this far? Watch out, watch out this way so that, uh, hold it anyway. You wanna, you wanna be there? And I can step up, watch out.
From that family, wanna come up? Jazzy, go and take pictures. Oh, please. You got it right.
Some of y'all like to come along this side?
Alright, good job.
I'm gonna get through this presentation when I go out. We have another presentation tonight. And, uh, although it's hard to upstage what just happened, I, I believe that, that Mrs. Rupp will be the one to be able to do so. So, Mrs. Rupp, if you stand at the podium, I'm gonna introduce to everyone, Mrs. Avrin, excuse me, I'm talking to Mama, Mrs. Mary Rupp. And Mrs. Mary Rupp is here to, um, get an award for her work with the Blue Collar Water Project. So let me explain to y'all a little bit about Mary. And Mary provides homemade baked goods such as muffins and cupcakes, as well as stock in the city's refrigerator with cold water weekly for the sanitation, water, street department workers of the city of Prairie Grove. She does this to show her gratitude to the hard-working city employees of Prairie Grove that continue to work daily in this extreme climate of our area. This is something that hits home for Mary for her father as one of those employees. So today it is my pleasure to introduce you to Mrs. Mary Rupp, to the city council of Prairie Grove.
My project is called Blue Collar. I worked to get whole water to the city, to the Prairie Grove, the cycling drivers, the truck drivers.
You're doing perfect, right?
I went to get whole water to the cycling, trash, restrooms, everything. I mean, I'm not supposed to be the picture, always cold water in the refrigerator every day. I'm really passionate about my dad because my dad is a recycling truck driver. And there is someone who can show to anybody who's gone during the winter. I feel like they don't get appreciated and they just have.
Stay right there, okay? And so let me, let me just add to this, and, and not that I want to take away from the Mrs. Hart of USA here. Um, but I used to be one of those workers. And for all of us that sit in an office every day, like I do now, and enjoy the conference of an air condition and a leather seat. Like, it's easy for us to forget what it is to have to do the work that your dad does and many other employees, not just in the city of Prairie Grove, but around our great nation every single day. Truth is, that is a hard work. You don't get a lot of reward from it. And so anytime someone steps up to the plate and too willing to put a pat on it, that to those type workers and to the people out there that's really building our community and building our nation, kudos to you. It is a, it is a special thing to recognize everyone in the world. And you've taken a stand and taken a step to recognize what's going on in the city of Prairie Grove with our workers. If any of us that got out of their air-conditioned vehicle today to feel that hundred-and-five-degree heat and to realize that these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, working that for eight hours a day, you realize why they need cold water. And so with that, Mrs. Rupp, I am here to, to present to you significant appreciation from the city of Prairie Grove, from the city council of Prairie Grove, to say thank you for what you're doing, finally, for what you're missing for the, the citizens of Prairie Grove.
Hey y'all, uh, Ms. Rupp brought a flyer for what she does. I put some on each side of the stage. Entrance, uh, please grab one. It has her information on how you can help with her cause. And again, we're super thankful for, especially younger, all who recognize that we love sports.
I think she's got one more thing to say before we move on.
So on my flyer, there is information about donating non-virtual snacks or gift cards for ingredients for the baked goods. We all think of bottles of water. Anything else you think would help?
Mrs. Rupp outside of bottled water and homemade goods. Do you, do you do anything else as far as given to the employees?
I have a few of the brand possible, but they have
If I wanted to donate, who would I reach out to? Is it on that information? Is it on that paper? Okay, thank you.
What kind of ingredients do you deliver? That make you, like sugar?
Uh, chip brownies, cookies, uh, anything that if you're gonna make us a light dish and pour it over earlier in the morning. Uh, she also really needs, uh, like the portable frame from the dollar store that has a fair lid. Or cupcake lagers. She has social media. I will follow. Um, so she has Instagram. It is Mary Rupp Haggan. And she's got a Facebook page. And her Facebook page is, uh, sorry, I'm floating Washington County, Arkansas, being the part of the US. And she posts every week with, uh, what she's making for the gentleman and pictures of what she heard it over, uh, and all the others. And I also have a board we set now, which I'm lighting has worked for several hours over the last year. And yesterday she was crowned here as being Miss Close.
Thank you, ma'am. Who would have thought we'd have many pretty girls with crowns inside of the city council meeting? Before we move on to the next, uh, order of business, we did in our public comment, we, uh, we were gonna have Jerry from Privcom speak. And when I asked about public comment, I didn't see you move, so then I thought, well, maybe he's just here to listen and not to speak. Do you want to speak, sir? Okay.
Mayor, can I mention something?
Yes, sir.
If the family, if I have marriage and others, may want to listen to the whole meeting, feel free to get up any time that y'all want, because I know you might have a question.
Okay, so yeah, definitely. No, you can't leave, Tony. Hey, are y'all doing any promotions that needs to be said while you have the platform?
That's right. So all three of these ladies have, uh, social media profiles. They will all be going to Alabama next July to represent the state of Arkansas for their platforms. Um, Atlee is your Miss Close kid. Flika, her platform is foster care, adoption awareness. So if you're on the community pages, you will see us sharing a lot about, um, looking for donations. Um, right now I'm like, it's collecting duffel bags so that foster kids have something to carry their personal belongings in when they have to move homes, um, things like that. So we will always share what they're willing to do. Uh, when we were here, we're actually donating candles to the pantry that were for men.
Alright, new business moving on to, to the C-line. We have a city ordinance to approve the preliminary plat for the Copper Hill subdivision.
Thanks, Claire. It's cool, Hannah. But, uh, we had a really good meeting with Copper Hill. We had tabled some stuff because we were, we had lots of questions. We felt like we didn't have a lot of representation of what they were going for. They brought that back to us on Thursday night and we had really great conversation, uh, that have revised a few things. I was just gonna tell you on our notes, the green space total is nine point two acres. Uh, they're gonna zone this out in phases, which y'all can see in the different. Yeah. There we go, the phasing. Uh, the phasings are gonna have sixty to eighty roofs per phase. Each phase has to come back to planning commission to be approved. Sure, yeah, I might pull a couple of those. Yeah, we'll go through. Okay, so some of the designs they presented us, you can see on the screen up here. We did, uh, put in our motion that any single-family home had to have a hundred percent brick and mortar design on the front. Uh, and so if you look like this final one over here, that would actually not be the standards that we set in our motion. Uh, we can set up to the first floor. Yeah, up to the first floor. So this one over here would be fine. Uh, any multi-unit designs? There you go. Those will come to us on an as-designed basis. So we didn't want, with some of these faces looking into like twenty thirty-two, we felt it probably wasn't appropriate to go ahead and set design standards for the entire subdivision without knowing, but we do want to have control over that. So they will have to bring it back to the review, uh, and approve. The proposed design on the Collector Street, let's go back to that. Uh, so this is Butler Road, and I actually think they discussed doing this on.
You know, this would be four or five.
Yeah, sorry. But they were gonna do that on more than two in the neighborhood.
But go ahead and draw this picture.
Sure. So what they're proposing is, uh, parking on one side of the road.
And it'll be designated parking with stripes.
Yes, so you can see that here on, they're showing the parking. They've got some little green.
Are those curb, are those like curblets, like where they're before curb?
Does that design some of the thought truck?
Okay. It's a hash striping, just so dedicated, that it not really occurred from, kind of. And they are gonna stripe the, the parking of the one side as in the other side to be posted in the park. We felt that better benefited.
And Prey said that will be on this through street that finds at the border and also on the right side of the surround.
I think that's what Prey said.
Yes.
And that's where they're gonna put all the street parking, yes, on one side.
Yes, just on one side of the street, uh, that will be. Uh, we have a lot of discussion on where visitors would park, uh, similar to any other or any other concept that people have run to this. They will have something we asked about is some parking in the green spaces because they did show, one of the things we asked for them to do was show us uses for the green space and not just green space. So they have several different spaces throughout the neighborhood and we, they've got, that's right, a soccer field. So here, you can see soccer field, basketball goal. Down here, they were gonna focus more on smaller children playground type. And then you can see kind of randomly spread out, they've got little cut-throughs where kids or whoever can access these parks without having to walk through people's yards. So we.
We gotta ask them even the green space around the pond if they could put a sidewalk or a walking trail around there.
Yeah.
Something to make it useful.
Who ends up with the green spaces? City?
There you're finding on maintaining as part of their POA.
Yes. So they told us that Ralph Coleman will hold the POA until it's fully developed out and then they will do elections in the proper steps and then turn it over to subdivisions.
Yeah, each phase, they said, would be sixty to eighty.
Sixty to eighty.
So it's not any one year that will be a huge impact.
Assuming it starts at the top and works its way down, more or less.
First, first phase is over here on Pittman Street.
Yeah.
And I believe this is the second phase.
Okay.
They do have some improvements, track, right, that, uh, they're gonna have to make off-site to make any of this work.
They had visited with us about off-site sanitary sewer and our infrastructure as far as the receiving stream of everything that's up.
Sewer down all one block three.
And they are interested in partnering with us in the future if we do not have the funding to complete our necessary improvements to establish the entire build-out. So they said if we couldn't get enough funds in-house, they asked if they could assist.
This is a nine-year project.
Are they widening commercial down on that end? Or Pittman, is Pittman getting widened on that piece that they're gonna start on? And the one that comes to.
Orders, their subdivision will get wide, both on the Butler and. And I talked to Chuck about this. I don't know if it's from the cities of the name, but like on Butler, they've got, uh, a lot here that they go around and a lot here they go around. Uh, if the city wants to make that continuous, we may need to pony up just a little bit while they're doing construction to have that go ahead and curve. But I think that's something we can talk about and work out when they get that far. That's down the road ways.
Can we not make them do it?
No, it's not their property. I mean, we can't do it in front of somebody else's property. I suppose we could, but I don't.
Work in support of subdivision improvement, anything that orders a street, they have to improve it. So those divisions are property or not part of subdivision, that's part of the subdivision. Pretty easy to do it at the same time.
Both, it's both very short stretch.
So you can see on these land uses, those actually aren't the phases. The, the land uses are showing what sub-home they are. And so that's the, so single-family, multi-use, front, front load, rear load, I mean, just all of their different breakdowns and how many lots it's gonna be. That says five seventy-five, but he told us five eighty total, uh, units.
Some other, what do you think, long blocks? There will be a sidewalk, not sex those. People won't have to walk all the way over. So there'll be a sidewalk through the middle of the block. Another one right here. These are rear load lots. The family in their little lot. Either a rear lot, either a rear, yeah, either a rear lot box, so.
So we're approving the whole preliminary plat that they're gonna bring.
They will bring back each.
Bring back spaces for approval again?
Yeah, so the conversation with that is, if we don't approve the preliminary plat in its entirety, it's very hard for them to decide to do a project this large right now if they don't know in three years if we're gonna say, oh, thank you, what's the whole deal? And so what they're asking for is for us to look at it from a larger concept and approve that. And then by phase.
They've got millions of dollars in off-site infrastructure to make this work. Obviously, they can't commit to millions of dollars off-site, not knowing that.
I understand. That's just kinda crazy. We've never done a preliminary plat and then come back and piecemeal to prove that later on.
We're never really happy.
Usually it's a one and done when we have the preliminary plat.
A lot of it was the feedback we got, uh, from the couple meetings before is it seemed like the biggest concerns to the constituents were rate of build. Um, and so we countered that with the approval of her face, the design and its longevity, basically how long they would last and what they would look like in several years. And so we felt like, uh, some sort of masonry or put the water on the front would help with that. Uh, and then obviously parking, uh, with the streets to get school buses down. We had our walker come from the school. And I think he was okay with the design they showed as long as school buses to get through. But it was, it's helpful to have Jason, because if a fire truck can't get through a school bus, it can't through, so they have to meet all that. Yeah, I think that's all our notes from Thursday. If anyone has any questions.
Offsite, whether, what are we gonna do?
They're building, we'll do an election, uh, gravity line is gonna go right up the town and from the, for the, for the, as part of wagon. They border on Wagon Springs, but the line through Wagon Springs isn't big enough for their full build-out. So they're just gonna parallel a new line or go around like.
And eventually a new force will have to build, uh, basically Cedar Springs, that last one, that block street, there's more than five blocks.
Yeah.
So the city's parts to get that last piece, the force.
And we have anticipated, and we've talked about it, I think the easiest thing to do is lay a parallel line for the gravity. And then we'll take any existing services, et cetera, already, gravity, that's there, just to the force and all the way.
And then the sewer line down Butler, we needed to get a sewer line down Butler anyway, that's nothing there.
The 12 inch throw, uh, baguette, from the two block, the two.
So we discussed the impact fees, um, previously.
Yes, sir.
So would that be something that would be that also that affect the?
Building, our impact fees are normally charged at buildings on that.
Okay.
So if it was done prior to that, when they bought the building permit, it wouldn't have.
So one of the conversations, sorry, I said it already, but on the park property where like the basketball court is in the soccer field, we did ask for some parking on the grass or whatever, that way, uh, group, we're cleaning this, they're not taking up space, it's so much yard to go there. But there's.
So all here.
What's the, uh, seven yellow lots? But is, was it, why there's only seven? What is that? What is that? The yellow, yellow in the middle there, middle pile.
Plan area number three.
Plan area three. There on the back of those.
What are they? I guess we're asking, I guess Chris is.
I know, I'm trying to find an email.
You're, you're asking us to remember.
Do you know who these book guys?
Right. I, I mean, it's just, so I'm seven, it's kinda way three.
That was for me, right? No, that was. Yeah, I'm looking. Yeah, I'm looking.
I think like, yeah.
It's it's spelled out.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, they don't lack of, they're not very many of them. Yeah. It must be expensive bill.
Probably a bigger lawn. Okay, hold on, here it is.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Was it on this?
Well, the ones that are on the east side there.
You want, we'll.
Yeah, we will email your answer. I didn't get it sent everybody.
You're probably right, mine, uh.
Yeah, they look bigger. So it makes me feel better.
Uh, just and they covered this at the meeting. Uh, they're, they're talking, most of the units are going to be sixteen hundred square foot and they're not going to be. None of them will be less than three dozen too bad. So even like the townhouses, three dozen too bad. He said some of the townhouses might go down to like twelve hundred. Five units, but sixteen hundred are most single family.
Now, from what I remember him saying, the majority of them are all single family homes. Remember the percentage? It's been like it was a high percentage.
What people was in the middle of, I remember all the emails.
That you remember?
I do not remember. But I.
All these bright lines and. All right.
Any more questions, ladies and gentlemen? Yeah, it's all to.
Move spin the role place or it's perjury and title alone.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? We have, uh. Please not here to read it. So I have, uh. You did, Brian? Good. Okay, real call. No, I'm just making sure we didn't have further question. I have a motion and a second. Any further? Real call.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All audience to approve, uh, preliminary plat for copper hills. And move away from the first and second reading.
We've been to roles, wait a second, third reading and off the order.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Real call. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business article D. We have a city audience to waive competitive bidding for Picket Ridge. Chuck, are you going to speak about this one?
That's the main project that we discussed last year and we decided to wait until we found the contractor that had shown the whole like one seventy. They're there and, uh, we reached out and talked to it starting times and come back. So they're really good with the way.
And at first the opinion that we got is that we could not do it on. Our rent, but he he confirmed with this lane, but this lane says, yes, we can't wait. We did check with our legal.
It's just under sixty-five thousand. Uh, it's sixteen hundred. People are crossing by here that we bargained with.
This gets all the way to very end.
It's a very good price. Let's do it right now and I think they're actually going to drag it in there.
We've been a role play door perjury title.
Have a motion and second. Any further? Real call. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
A motion to approve the audience to waive competitive bidding for Picket Ridge.
We've both been a role wave, second, third reading and off the order.
Have a motion and second. Any further? Real call. Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Orange versus.
Yeah, you're legal. I'm at the bottom of the list. I forget.
Thank y'all. I should have had y'all before the the copper hills discussion. Reports of committee sanitation, Ms. Sue Clark.
Uh, everything's going well. The new driver is doing good. It's very hot. So we're at. Kind of double up and help each other out.
Street department, Rick Clayton.
Uh, crews are working on sidewalk improvements on money growth near the school. Uh, contractor that we had in place that do development for school started. Get put this off and then finally just called me the week of school that I'm not going to make it. And so we actually came out, I'm somebody else. They started for today. They're going to pull me in. So we should be sidewalking. And we. And we sat, who did the intersection of money growth and bush on site and they're working on a push list right now. And by the way, that project out, that's a big problem. So I think everything does. Uh, base two, the money growth of the school without. See, well, there's a lot of work, a lot of dirt. And, uh, base two of the downtown rehab, we've been doing some value engineering and meeting. Eversley, what the engineers for that project and the contractor that. That we said their bid and they worked with this and I think the other number that come back. They will clearly reduce the price of that project. If the meeting mayor would, that they have. Our meeting and, uh, I think we're going to come in and maybe less than four million dollars in our contract. They really don't thought to them. That's it on the.
Is it just basically chuck changing some of the stuff in the job, I guess, to get it down like?
We changed some of the material. We changed some of the side improvement that we were doing about one type of. We want to close all that in concrete tile. Green space inside like that. Uh, some sidewalks that look more like a case bed, we're going to go to the house. The third of this road count and do that and get out of the project.
So you cut out long street.
Long street improvements, uh, the gist of the water line and the, uh. Drainage improvements are all still there. So it's. Um, yeah, we just took away some of the. The I can give you will. That's going to be on site at the.
Like the cemetery, can we go back into house to that or hire that later? I'm guessing if we choose to do that.
Yes, we can make those improvements later, but it.
Let me just say kudos to Mr. Orange and Mr. Wally because it's really them who's been putting pen to paper and has worked pretty tirelessly over the last. Month or two as we got that original bid and thinking about shaving. Eight point seven million down to eight point nine million down to four million. Um, you get that that's a lot. That's not trimming the fat. That's getting rid of the cow, you know? We we went from steak to pork chops. Um, but that that is really just a, uh. A good conservative effort from the two gentlemen that sits before you guys. You had something?
Yes, well, this is the appropriate place to speak about reduced speed limits.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, we had a constituent reach out, uh, Francis and Dan Frederick. I forwarded you all their email. Uh, they live where Kim and Joe Maynard used to live on the little road. Uh, they have some serious complaints about day rates and the speed of. Dump trucks, construction trucks going down Little Elm Road. Currently the speed limit is forty-five. They're asking that we look into reducing that. I told them that we would definitely do so. We could also look at maybe some of our. Speed radar flashing things out there because I told them a lot, even if we did reduce the speed limit, if someone's going. Fifty-five, it probably doesn't change until they get punished, uh, several times. That's the way I work anyways. Uh, like lowering a sign on your phone. Uh, but a several hundred dollar time. Uh, Chief Sheeday, Tommy John did a new offer. That's great place to get your funding as you get this little.
And and O'Brien Henshaw's out there. And one of the bigger issues, she may stop on one of these there immediately. Um, it is forty-five and it'll. I encourage people even to the right along. He's up on radar. Probably you get a big dump truck like that running forty-five miles an hour. Speed limit's forty-five, they're going forty-six or forty-seven, seeing. Be you know, six fifty-five. That's 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 a big truck going that fast. Um, so I mean, we could write some theme tickets, then we'll be writing theme tickets about one or two miles an hour over. I don't know if we want to beat that department. Um, but he, like I said, he may stop. That is a problem apparently. There was a problem in Farm apparently. He got so bad they hate toward them now they're.
Well, that's what she was saying is they were frustrated because Farmington had essentially told them they could not use the road that goes by the school. So now they're hate warning come down Little Elm, um, and it's creating a lot of traffic. Uh. He said after O'Brien left on his run, another cop parked out there and had someone.
Yeah, you and it was like a lot of times we live at that twenty-four seven, which is possible.
Right. And they did acknowledge that.
There's maybe no decrease if not one of the credit, no safety issues. So I mean, wouldn't make it easier for issues. I patient now at around forty-seven, forty-eight. You know, they're.
Yes. So that was, that was one. And then, uh, replacing the pavement on the. Around the culvert by across from the fire station out there. I guess they got washed out or something and they. Had long complaints about it and then.
I was reading something else.
I guess there's a culvert out there that's been washed out or gravel all over the.
On another way, I'm across from five of them.
Yes, they would like to breathe this.
Did it just want gravel on it? Did it just want gravel? Was this one?
And I think they want to breathe. Asphalt, I guess. I thought they just said it's a problem.
It's little round just had the overlay two years ago. They come in and did our entire.
I guess they'd say that, um, there and then when you turn off the sixty-two on Little Elm, that these trucks have eaten away.
We fixed that last week.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a place where they were cutting the corner a little bit sharp. Those big trucks were having a hard time making that corner. And Manny Maynard discussed it moving out there and put some fill in it's cold patch to try to take some of that radius out.
You might just check.
So is it, is it at their house? Is it that residence?
Across the street that lead.
Okay.
One other item that council probably needs to address, I think it's time to address. Is the renaming of Highway one seventy. Uh, Bashar with the highway department, our boss in the office today talked to us and they're getting close to having the painting down on one seventy. The reason he pushed that project ahead was so that they could get that turned over to the city. Once that becomes the city, we really need to have a name on it. We're going to have to readdress. We can't keep calling it Highway one seventy honestly. Uh, Wallen Grove Road is my suggest, but y'all come up whatever you want to, but it need, it needs to have a name.
That made use of the time. Is Wallen Grove being used anywhere right now?
I don't think so. We can, we can verify that, but we're going to make a decision. But though. I know a lot of people refer to it as Wallen Grove Road anyway, because it's.
You want.
Not a good problem.
But but does it have growth in it?
So.
We have lots of the street being.
Sorry, you say you want us to come up with something else?
I don't think so. I'll be thinking about it between now and next month.
You don't need it tonight.
Um, I think we need to probably look the ordinance and see what is the part of the statute. I don't think anything is, but, uh, I don't think we did. We did heritage parkway. Maybe we did.
You know, why you got to wall street? I think, and remember we had a committee that came. Been a while.
I think, I think the council just named it, but.
Yeah, we named.
Well, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we just named. I remember the council loaded on the name, but I don't remember which. Forget the winners on this.
So probably within the next few weeks, it's going to be a city on, on street and on highway.
So do we need to do something with the speed limit or is that something?
Have the authority to change.
Like some ball, what and so.
Met with Chris on on rehab page one this morning. And I think we found a resolution towards the path to get closed out, get things up. And, uh. And then we'll get off the space too, but several did do the value been serious up on that. We're hoping you know, but it's broke that project closed out early.
Approved on the price that y'all had worked out with the engineer, but you can email us.
Uh, the one that we had talked about before, we, uh, met halfway on the liquidated damages. And so it brought the, uh, value of about eighteen thousand dollars. But, um, what we've talked about today is we are getting four inserted valves that weren't a part of the original contract. And the value of those valves, I think. Twenty thousand five hundred. It was eighteen thousand more than what I emailed. So it's two thousand five hundred.
About the bill in the second.
Yes, same contractor is doing all of them. So it's.
That's it.
All right. Our growth calls. Let me pull the paper on this one since. So I'm sorry, the, uh, the update on finances for the program court is that they have collected thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen and thirty cents. In the month of July with the expenditures of thirty-seven thousand, nine, six, five, thirty cents. So they are plus three hundred and fifty dollars for the month. And as you know, from month to month, anytime we can go plus when it comes to, uh, the district court, it is a plus. And so we were happy to see that we were on the positive side of the court readings on this month. Fire department, turn it over to J C. J C, Fox and Rock, Chris Paul.
Um, so we, um. Just before we get to with the separate, however, I'm a parts corrects many meetings tomorrow, probably the first one in a year. Mayor and I have talked then, uh, Larry and talked about a starting to be regular. Mayor and I have talked, then, uh, Larry and talked about a starting to be regular, at least quarterly meetings, uh, that just touch base and see what's going on. Want to discuss future planning, grants, um, just where we can get more involved, uh, I invited, uh, Lance to come, uh, come to the meeting, just to, uh, just to kind of be ears and oversight, you know, trying to work with school and work with, uh, work with us and see what we can do to improve our Parks and Recs and, you know, we're, get a public opinion where we need everything, where we can, uh, what we can find.
Six o'clock.
So we got a, we got a few of the, uh, few of the people who were on the committee drop off, moved away, so we got, I've talked to a few other ones who are, are interested, they're gonna come in. Um, I got Megan Oliver, I got, uh, uh, David Heitman, um, and then we got David Ruff, uh, Mitch Cameron, Karen Golden, me, Mayor be there. So we're gonna, we're, like I said, this is, this is kind of new for me, I, I think I've had, it's only one meeting, because I've taken this thing over, we're taking two, so, uh, I think we're trying to get serious about it, our, our town's getting grown big enough that we can, uh, actually maybe that will lead to some, all the taxes money, I know. So, we're hoping to be able to look for grants, and, uh, so any, any insight or any, um, uh, comments, they're always welcome. Um, so, that being said.
Mr. Aldridge, do we need, do, does the city council have to approve the appointments, or are we good with, with the appointments coming from the?
I didn't, you didn't make the appointments, which is a vibe or a committee, uh, it's, they don't have anywhere in the board power.
Right.
So.
I mean, it's just pretty much just gonna be a community meeting, we're kind of like, I do a burritos, thank, to hope everybody's gonna talk about it, I'm gonna bring it back and tell you what kind, what we come up with. Um, but, like I said, that being said, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn this over to Chuck and see how it pulled it, give you numbers on that.
Larry had the numbers, we said it right. Yeah, I, I put most of those in the newsletter, but we hit almost twenty-four thousand attendance this year, the old record is twenty thousand five hundred, so, uh, we didn't just go past the old record, we blew it, like, uh, that's been a real good change, with the COVID years, you know, we've been down really two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two away. Uh, two thousand twenty-two, we didn't bounce back, because we had opened till June.
Right.
Construction, so. It's nice to have a really good year, uh, we've never seen revenue like this before, come to that pool, it not only paid for itself this year, it made cities money. Don't expect that to happen.
Right, right.
But I'm not just rolling.
No, I don't agree with that, right, okay.
I think the highest concession revenue we ever had is somewhere around thirty-four thousand, we hit fifty thousand this year, so, I mean, it was just a good year overall.
I know we had some weather issues, the pool had.
We, we almost live, and we get calls in late June, and like, can you tell me what days are open for parking?
Hey Chris, uh, you might get a chat with Jake Devault, that runs site down here, he really wants to partner with the city on some things, and we had talked about basketball courts and stuff like that.
Okay, yeah.
And then I, I might bring this up in the next twenty years, or however long I'm on here, but I would love to start looking for some sort of bubble or cover for the pool, we have an incredible swim program, and then our, I mean, our kids have to stop, essentially, or they have to drive to spring meal at five-thirty in the morning for practice. Um, and so, I know that's millions and millions of dollars, but if we could ever figure something out to where we could use that pool year-round, and let a swim team function there, I think that would be good.
I did have a problem, I think the ball is a long problem. But, uh, we'll bring it up tomorrow night.
Okay, then, yeah. I did go down with the bathrooms on there, and then the parks considered, I think, I think this is pretty, pretty, it's very everywhere.
Yeah, uh, like I said, the pool's closed for the year, the playground, the bathrooms all been except for money for. Uh, Larry's been over there several times, you see a lot of people there, I've been to some of the paintings last week. Um, depending on who you ask, on what they want to see, if they're on the day to ten, they want more playground, if they're on the day to twenty, they want more seating.
Right.
So we're looking at. We've put very much more seating in there, it's gonna line the entire. We are looking at parks at the call for those style of park benches. But the thing about it is, when we put the park benches over there, we have to enter the ground, otherwise they end up over the soccer fields on the side.
And the new thing, when some of the novelty wears off, and the hat parking lots, something on the car, it won't be as big.
Right, right.
Right now, it's just bad.
Okay.
But it is getting used quite a bit, but.
Oh, you know, he's over there.
I, I've heard down for, I have a hundred point three dollars there, so.
Wash everything down. We, all small pools, wearing clothes, and all the systems repaired, all of the classes, like, it is like this right now.
You're right.
We should have a good reporter, Parker.
Anything else, Mr. Paul? Um, please, before I turn it over to Chief, I'm, I'm gonna talk to y'all a little bit about those impact fees that he brought up a second ago, I didn't get enough time to do. Let me say that, that way, it's not a lie, I didn't spend enough time, as, as what we needed to, to bring it before y'all to try to pass a motion, but what we, what we have learned is that other cities like Formanton, all looking into impact fees just like us, obviously, we know that Elkins has passed it. Fayetteville has it, Springdale has it, P Ridge has it, having got the ins and outs, because everyone's a little bit different, but it seems like they go anywhere from fifty dollars per impact fee to a hundred and fifty. And when I say fifty to a hundred and fifty, like Elkins does a hundred and fifty, it's really three hundred, because it's a hundred and fifty to the police department, and it's a hundred and fifty to the, the fire department, so when they say fifty, it really is, it comes out to be a hundred. And, uh, they just break it down into the fifty percentile as far as the, their breakdowns on each department, so, um, generally speaking, uh, depending on what y'all comfort level is and what it is, hopefully I can have something before y'all next month that we can debate or think about, but when you take something, I figured I'd pull numbers since Chief asked about the Raj Coleman one, and we know that we have five hundred and eighty houses coming in today, so if you do fifty dollars or a hundred for the impact fee, where you're breaking it fifty-fifty, you talk about fifty-eight thousand dollars to both your, uh, police department and your fire department, a hundred and sixteen thousand, in, in total, impact fee that has been brought to the city through, through departments of this new building, so that is a lot of money. I don't think it's a lot when you think about fifty dollars or a hundred dollars in the cost of me buying a house. Like if I'm buying a house for two hundred thousand dollars, and even if the, the developer, i.e. Raj Coleman, throws that hundred dollars towards me, I don't know that, that stops me from buying a house, two hundred thousand or two hundred thousand and one hundred dollars, like it doesn't necessarily change a whole lot. But this is just my take on it, my opinion, when we can collect a hundred and sixteen thousand or fifty-eight thousand dollars for each of our departments that, let's just be honest, we do get impacted by the idea of a subdivision coming in. And so whether it's another police vehicle, whether it's the uniforms for those police vehicles, whether it's a fire truck, um, I don't know all the equipment, since I didn't spend a whole lot of time or any time in the fire department, but I guarantee that there's equipment that J C buys as new employees come in and out, and a lot of times when we assess and, uh, the idea of a new employee, we normally go, well, it costs us much money to bring in a new employee, employee, or in the police world, someone quits and we bring someone in, and their clothes don't fit, the, 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 um, the, the bulletproof vest doesn't fit. And so very seldom do you have, very seldom do you have someone, as I leave and the guy they hire matches my size perfectly, where we can just switch stuff over, and so generally speaking, probably ninety percent of the time, we have to buy everything new. And you have a new employee, it's a new vehicle, it's, you, you take a Raj Coleman, and once it's completed, even though it's an eight-year process, you think about six hundred homes and almost another two thousand in population, it's, it usually hits us as far as trying to get the development out there on the front end before you get a whole lot of tax revenue coming in to be able to supply that, so there's always a deficit there that we're trying to play with. And I'm just saying that as an opinion to say that it's not a bad idea, you have the concern on your front end to say, will an impact fee scare people away? Will it stop people from building? Can we use an impact fee to help our first responders? My opinion is one hundred percent. And I think whether it's a hundred dollars or fifty dollars a pop, or you go as far as even Elkins, where it's a hundred and fifty and three hundred dollars on the total end, uh, you, you have to decide, if that becomes excessive, and maybe Mr. Aldridge can put in his opinion on what's excessive compared to our permit fees currently to what it is, but.
You know, currently, we do charge access fees for water and sewer on each building permit that you buy, so if a builder comes in and spends a thousand dollars on a building permit, pays fifteen hundred dollars in addition to that water and sewer access fees. They're not impact fees, because the way we adopted them was different than legislatively than how you adopt impact fees. But it's basically the same animal, it's for the, the amount of depletion that these new homes cost the system. I mean, that's what the purpose of it is, same thing on fire, police, some places have impact fees for parks and recreations, Rogers. Well, Fayetteville, I think, have impact fees on water, sewer, parks, police, and fire, I think they have five different fees. So people are used to, if they're by permits in Fayetteville, paying these, um, last year, we sold right around two hundred and fifty permits, so if you have a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars for fire, a hundred and fifty for police, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars that we brought in. So it's not, you know, a tremendous amount of money, but that wouldn't buy a police guard and thirty-seven thousand to fire department as well, or whatever, maybe, so. Well, it'd buy almost a police guard. Used to buy a police guard.
Mary's about the uniform, the rest of you, uh, had open with, the person that lived, you know, they tried, what, every, uh, but when you hire somebody that's. Now they're, they're about a thousand dollars, so, right now, we get a thousand dollar uniform out here, when we hire somebody, it's just about twenty-two, twenty-five hundred dollars. Hardly if that be like here, the next few weeks. While they're storing, uh, um, I'm sorry, just, um, but those things more than getting, we are constantly working this, but it takes up a lot of tremendous amount of, maybe, our hours, um, on those, we've got, earned about three old cakes right now. That's two, three weeks of work. Give a lot of hours and time for those things, that's never going to go away, obviously.
Most of the permits that we're selling right now for single family, probably range from like twenty-three hundred to three thousand, so I mean, three hundred dollars, I thought that's not much.
Mayor, maybe we're, I don't know if it was worth, the way that I think I'd be, money would have to be spent, but I mean, maybe one of the, you'd have fifty bucks for, uh, off that already in that. Eighty thousand dollars a year, we'll pay.
We get our priority back? So will we get our priority?
I'm fighting for that, but it does sound.
I believe our fee and E M S is per capita, so that.
So there are some additional requirements on impact fees, and I think Parker or somebody needs to probably research those, like, it was out, you know, but I think that any money that's collected, I think, has to be spent within seven years, so.
So my question to you guys, because we're not passing anything tonight, but I'm gonna try to get it worked into next month. Are y'all good with three hundred dollars, meaning a hundred and fifty and a hundred and fifty for each one of our, uh, emergency services, or is that too high in y'all's opinion?
I'd like to look at Parks and Rec.
Would you rather go, would you want to stay at the three hundred and go a hundred and a hundred and a hundred?
I don't know, in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's not worse than it is that Parks and Parks is important as police and fire, but I do think additional funds, I mean, we need more parks, we need soccer field, we need restrooms and playgrounds, and people moving in directly impact that, so.
And we are starting to plan some of those in lieu fees now, we probably collected what, fifty thousand dollars this year, Christine?
But in lieu of fees, it's two hundred and fifty dollars per lot, right, and then only subdivision.
Okay.
Some surrounding areas, there's eight hundred dollars per lot, so, so we, we deposit about fifty thousand dollars per year, for some division.
Like I do, I don't mean it's like fifty.
I was about to say, we can still stick with the three hundred.
Yes.
And it could be fifty for Parks and Rec, and then one twenty-five, one twenty-five to make up the other two fifty for two emergency services.
Better off to this, up or in lieu of fees or just charging.
I don't know how that would. If it's something that we can.
Uh, I have no charge of six hundred in lieu of.
I'll work on both of them, and I'll have them ready for y'all next month.
And all this in one number, the surrounding area, etc.
Yeah, probably our biggest thing right now is replacing, and we'll talk about this a little bit tomorrow night too, but we're facing needing to replace like and land laws are so high right now, but I don't, they weren't about to report land, it's something that just.
It, it brings kind of home on the same one, girl, it's like we are.
Very good example.
That would be a good one, to kind of mirror off.
Miss Scott, did you say, did you say Formanton's at six hundred, and they're thinking about going off on, uh, in lieu of?
Yeah, probably in the six.
Is there a resource available right now with current fees for the city, or how all the menus are located, and I, I'd like to see.
In fact, we're talking about that tomorrow night too, but what I'll do is I'll send you my, uh, my presentation.
Can I ask a clear questioning question on baseball and softball fielding? I know it's a little gray, but who owns what as far as the high school baseball field and the high school softball field?
Well, actually, we talked about that tomorrow night, but, uh, since nineteen seventy-six, we've had a lease from school, those, those two baseball fields. Used to include the tennis court as well, of course, we did away with the tennis court two years ago, we actually had to get that decommissioned from the state to figure out some grant money on that facility as well as the baseball. So we had to submit a request to the state to take the old tennis court off, which we did. The two baseball fields were leased for twenty-five years in nineteen seventy-six, and then we redid the leases two thousand and one. So, uh, through two thousand twenty-five, we've got. And then we've got it written and written between the two of us on maintenance, on maintenance.
And in short, we own the high school baseball field, and the school owns the softball field that we use on, uh, and so the contract just allows the agreement for the high school to use our field and for us to use their field. And I don't see, even with Dr. Campbell here, I don't see any reason why that contract won't come in, most of what we deal with in the contract is what portion do we pay for this versus what do y'all want to pay, do you want improvements on this, especially when you think about Mitch and what he's trying to do with the high school baseball field, like he puts a lot of money into the cat and the upkeep of that field. How do we use that, the baseball facilities that I mean, and his batting cages and whatnot, and so usually when we get down to our contractual agreements, come down to the little things of the fifty-fifty breaks on, we want to improve this, we, we all chime in and put a little bit money to that. And so, I don't, I mean, like I said, once again, Dr. Campbell's here, I know it's all new to him as well, but I don't see any reason why the contract won't continue on, we just may have to, to be a little bit more bet on it.
Basically, they take care of the stuff up there as far as, uh, building maintenance, including the restrooms and and smaller field than that, and we do the same thing at Green Park, including the baseball field, we pay all the utilities there. Uh, we operate the bathroom, keep the plate and all that, so they take care of what's up there, and we take care of what's down there. Now Mitch does choose the mobiles on the fields, that's his choice, and he, particularly the way he wants it done, and it's uh, if he's got any special projects he wants to do on that baseball field, it's kind of, here, which are high schools, he'll come to us and ask us about it. By the time we split the cost, if we see a benefit, so it's just, it's kind of a working relationship.
I think my question is more of, I think it's more expensive to not have them in the same location, and I know this came up with, uh, like locker rooms, and the need for those in both places, working restrooms all the time, et cetera. And I know when I played, we played right there back to back.
And I know when I played, we played right there back to back. And I'm thinking at the bottom too, that's convenient. So I just, I just had more of a question on how that.
So we're going to get real deep on this, but we we have, we have spoke to Mr. Tom over at Specialty Nails to try to acquire some land from him. Um, we, like I haven't met with him in over a month. And so I'll say that, yeah. We we kind of get deep in conversation and it breaks off and we get deep in conversation, but. If if we could ever work out numbers with him, then then I would be before y'all asking for whether or not we can buy some land from from Specialty Nails. And in essence, what we thought was put two softball fields behind Specialty Nails. And then we were going to buy the, or we hope to buy the road that runs adjacent to the, just so we have road access. But he wants to sell the frontage of his property as well and thought about a parking lot up front just to have an overflow parking, but. We don't know what his price is, but ultimately that would give us softball fields a little bit closer, get us a little bit more in just. It's like anything else, it's it's finding the land, having them willing to sell and then whether or not the money is appropriate for us to spend.
Any other things on the statement? Expansion.
We have a task for our pension services. What's the deadline on that? It's next week.
Yes, I think I think we gave twenty one days on it, so it should be the end of next week.
We should have all.
That's pretty much it. That's the update. There's not much going on until we can get the the architects. Along with this and then then we'll have that meeting. Chief, do you have anything else to add to any of this?
Really busy. Uh, we offered a gentleman, uh, one of our squad, we had one of our four veteran seasonal league. Starting to. Personal business and other opportunities. So we lost one of our season officer. He just stayed part time with the, so he's filling his gap here. We've offered a woman to a Matthew that she was probation, he has to go to full academy. But there's only one academy left. Travel and go to be down there. Then another officer, additional offer of employment, another one of our veteran officer. Looks like he's going to be going to state police. It's like everywhere in the world of law enforcement, all these other agencies are very, very, very hard on us, but they're offering pay that we. He went to bed and so um even the state police has changed their hiring. So now, or when you go in state police, you may be. The E R, the saw, or wherever now you don't want to be big, whatever you're wanting to be. So um. They realize that's when they're improving and have. So there's a couple of other agencies, other small agencies, I think Washington County is losing one state police as well. So just it's just a struggle to pay officer with all the other opportunities and short drive distance. Other news, the, I said on the four district of task force with the board member myself and chair and bringing up leadership. But we do got, when we look at our employees, we got an additional employee that's not after our trouble. We have a hundred percent fund, you know, but we also get a hundred percent of that back. They're over in. Those guys keep on working, obviously the drug business, how we're reading. They they have information. Our undercover officer actually that we. Got information of a juvenile trafficking organization that's very big and more like our call the whole United States. We just don't ever think, you think that our sister does. So actually that was his case then. The past few days, he actually did drug organization, actually they recovered one juvenile that was busted in the state. I just think that's good to mention to let council know um. We can go on one detail that they are undercover organization, but they do tremendous amount of work and a lot of that. I think we see geared on TV, we don't realize what our back and forth. How much that's going on. So I think it's just good to mention that work he does um, all those officers. Um, when we get a hundred percent of our money back, we get our money for both companies. Other than that, busy trunk or treat. I would send an email, we're looking at Monday. They will have a week for that. Battlefield Park, I've been getting, well, they got loaded up with requests ahead. What no, nothing here where they. So last year, they liked Battlefield Park better, support the Battlefield Park, but we don't have to bring people to the Battlefield Park. But I think that's. Indian Nation and all that, so it's all organization. It's not just for a grow trunk or treat, it's growing. That's too much money for our. Very important.
Thank you, Chief.
I would like to say one thing. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to go out with one of the officers, uh, Officer Cluck. So I appreciate you letting. Letting him take me out in the car and those cars are fun to drive. You get the lights and everything going, make it out of your way.
Well, the mayor even looked at the planes when the council. Mark, Mark is to be commended for being.
I asked off the block, I said, I'm just going out with you on a normal night. He just kind of looked at me and said, there ain't no such thing as a normal night.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, and I recommend for all accounts. We have both media, I've had, I've on the trip, had. Uh, come out, do the ride along. I mean, it may be a warm night or you may, you may see something that never again, that's why you sign the waiver. So anyway, um, it is an experience. I think it's one that. Everybody should be a part of really getting a seat.
Well, you really appreciate what our officers are putting in, what they go through out there on the on the highways for the citizens of Prairie Grove. So very thankful for.
Long range plan and Bree Greg.
Yep. Uh, so with a very short agenda, there's a very long time. We had uh, Richard and Kimberly Morgan ask for a conventionally experiment, have a mixed church and single family home. And our two zones, so it's the old Methodist church downtown. Uh. They bought the church, moved in, put some dorm style room and set upstairs. They have some interns that come in and out. Uh, and now they've decided that they want to hold church services in there. So essentially we told them that they would have to separate the facility with the firewall, so it would be up to commercial standards. Um, or move out and return it back to a church. And that's pretty much what we ended on. We've got quite a few. Commissioners in here that can jump in, but uh. I think they, the way it was presented, they were confused on. Being taxed as a church versus commercial versus residential and they. Got a tax bill, I think. And so they're trying to figure out their place and how they want to operate. Um.
Missionary training too?
Yes. Yeah. And so if you've been in there before, essentially what they're wanting to do is, or what we talked about is keeping the left. So if you walk in the main front doors, you would go up the stairs to set a classroom or down the stairs into a fellowship hall area and other way. Right now, in that area is where they have all the living. So master, um, and they put. Restrooms, like facilities in the upstairs part. So we had told them they'd have to put a firewall up there. Keep the restrooms that are directly outside of the sanctuary, uh, but have that completely separated space if they wanted to. Look at operating. But yes, they have interns coming and going. So again, that's kind of shape, staying at short period of time. Um, Copper Hill, we already discussed legendary fitness cane, which is the new gym right out here on the bypass. When they came and got their permit, we did ask them. To put some sort of masonry or something at least a couple of feet, a few feet high on their building. So it didn't look like just a large metal building. Um, because you've got Gabby's, the medical clinic, harvest, uh, Dollar General, who has all done the same. So they were coming back asking us to revisit um that thought. Essentially what we decided is they knew upfront what we wanted. They agreed to it at the time. But the cost is I think higher than what they expected. So we told them that we weren't still going to require it, but we were going to give them twelve months to do so. Get it open, start getting some money in, and then they could revisit putting that on the X. And then Juliette came and we discussed uh. Some of the planning that she had done as far as overlays and. Talked about that for a little bit and just kind of made sure what she had labeled all of the city is how we. envisioned it. And then we kind of tabled the rest of it for another meeting because it was pretty at that point.
We we did talk about possibility of developing uh design standards for the whole family.
Yes.
She's going to work up a draft for us, but we can send that just to see if it's something we're interested in. But I do think it's something that probably should be considered. And she should have that too.
There's something else she was going to work out.
What happens if the gym doesn't put the brick on in twelve months?
Do what?
What happens if they don't?
They're they're on.
Yeah.
Okay.
You. Or now that I hear we revisited.
Okay, I was wondering what the, what the mechanism was there to make them.
Thank you, Bree. Senior citizens.
Well, I'm just going to read this text here. Hey Lance, Scott, anything for me to report to town at tonight's meeting? Updates on the remodel addition? Thanks. No new news. As well as I like to report stuff, I'll look back and get.
We're going to have to give you another committee, no?
I got to expose. No, no, no. But anyway. Everything is going. I did find out that they have four paid employees when I told you about that.
Yes.
I did not know that.
Four?
Mm-hmm. Well.
Look at that, you have an update anyway.
Yeah, I do. So far with one.
Someone probably.
He delivers lunch and not one else. But. Council on Aging pays for two of them and E O A, I think I told you, pays for the other two. I did not know that. Lance said there's one boys and that when they're done with them. But there's more people coming too. And there's, and I'm sure there's more people getting delivery also. Three months and then one western background check. Three months.
Do meals on wheels?
Mm-hmm. It takes three months at least to get approved for background check. And I know I probably wouldn't pass. So. That's why the, I guess, I assume that's why they have to hire employees because they can't get anybody. Joe Giles is the only one that volunteers.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Tony Cunningham Library.
Uh, stopped by, visited with Megan and Amanda. They had a little bit less than a thousand kids for their summer programs. And they've started a Lego club. I have no clue what a Lego club is, but uh, I guess the kids enjoy it. They're going to start yoga classes in September. Be back in that back room on the right hand side. And Megan said they're buying about two hundred and fifty pieces of books and paperbacks and videos and everything else, just to try to keep current. She said the biggest thing they've noticed that a large demand is for library cards. So she said people are coming in and they're getting. Fifteen and twenty requests a week.
It's good.
New people come in to get library cards. So sounds like they're about to explode down there. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. As far as announcements, it's almost crazy to say the clothesline fair is Labor Day weekend. Um, but obviously that is the biggest weekend probably in Prairie Grove yearly. And so we have the clothesline fair coming up, the parade. Saturday morning, square dancing all weekend long. Second Saturday. Uh, street dance will be the following week, September ninth, Saturday night, seven P M to ten P M. And then Chief already talked about uh, police trunk or treat, at least tentative date will be October thirtieth at the Battlefield Park. Do you have any other announcements?
I might want to add that the weekend of the clothesline fair traffic.
Let me, let me bring up one thing. I don't know. I hadn't thought about it until um, just a few days ago, but next April the eighth. If you don't have your motel room for the solar eclipse, you ain't going to get one. Well, we're on the peripheral up here, but Russellville and it's going to be right in the four minutes, thirteen seconds.
One other. Um, I think they're going to be working on the highway. From the bridge, yeah. Tomorrow night, starting about eight o'clock. Uh, they're going to be, that's what I couldn't remember. Anyway, they're going to be working on the approach of the bridge on the Elway River, redoing some paving there. So throughout the night. I don't stay.
Go back from the edge of the bridge and then relay it so that the. So they'd be walking various lanes and they start at eight thirty at night.
They do have the street I never saw.
Before Tony, Tony adjourns.
October seventh, the Arkansas State Cass.
Oh yeah, we did. We moved that. I was thinking it was at the end of the month. And it's the state this year, right?
The state.
October seventh. And he starts, I I remember speaking with him because it kind of starts in a day and it runs kind of like a ten to three. And he's still at the Chamber Commerce Building. So we're not in our grass field next to the Chamber Building. Any anyone that wants to eat chili and to the stomach hurts. Dr. Campbell, you off of that one? You put, you put me and Dr. Campbell in. We'll sit next to each other and and share some hot sauce. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor. I move the way adjourned.
I already have a motion in second half in favor. Uh, y'all have a good night.